Welcome to the Douglas County Commissioners Candidate Forum, sponsored by the League of Women Voters of Lawrence, Douglas County, and the Lawrence NAACP. My name is Sonia Zarnicki, President of the League of Women Voters of Lawrence, Douglas County, and I will moderate the forum. Candidates, thank you for being willing to stand for office and for participating in this public information forum so voters can be better prepared for the election. We thank you for being here today. All of the candidates received questions in advance. Candidates will have one and a half minutes to respond to the first four questions and one minute for any remaining issues you would like to address at the end. Candidates will introduce themselves. Our timekeeper, Carol Williamson, will let each candidate know when there are 15 seconds left to respond and when time is up. We respectfully ask that the candidates stay within the time allowed for each question. The seating arrangement was determined randomly with the help of my student, Alex. I told him I would give him a shout out. You can see that candidates are seated according to their districts. The order of the districts was determined by randomly drawing the district numbers and the order of candidates within each district was determined by randomly drawing their names. The candidates' nameplates show their district number. Republican candidates' names are in red. Democratic candidates' names are in blue. The unaffiliated candidate name is in black and the Libertarian candidates' names are in green. We will rotate which district candidates give the first answer to each question. Thank you for being informed voters. The NAACP and the League cannot endorse candidates, but if you need a list of candidates and voter information, handouts are available at the table in the lobby and in the back of the room. Our questions and candidate responses should conclude by 4:15. There will be no additional questions from the audience in the large group. The candidates will be available after the forum so you, the audience, can visit with them individually at their tables. All the candidates are free to answer questions, offer materials, and seek volunteers. Okay, let's get started. So we will start with you, Pam, at the end. So please let me know if you can hear. The first question is, what actions would you take as a commissioner to address climate change and increased energy needs in Douglas County?
Okay, so in my five months of walking door to door, I've talked about climate issues with one person. So what that's told me is it's not the most forefront thing on the people's minds that I've talked to. My thoughts on issues surrounding the environment are that the federal government and climate scientists and people at the UN, they don't put their hands in the soil of Douglas County. The people that live here do. And so I trust the people of Douglas County and would consult with them when tackling any environmental issues. I asked one Douglas County resident to review our climate action plan. She worked on the environmental side of KDHE for 10 years, helping businesses be compliant. And this is her sentence that she gave me. There are conflicts in the plan. Almost every line is objectionable. It appears to be a money grab for federal green energy grants and county tax dollars. So that was her perspective. Some people like to work around people that do that and maybe call them naysayers, but I don't. You have to engage with people whose ideas are different than you, who are different than you, and ideas that you might not like. And the undeniable benefit of free speech is that you then arrive at the best idea. So the responsibility for securing energy needs for the general public lives with utility companies. And if utilities bring forward projects they want to place within Douglas County, then the commissioner's role is to evaluate those things on their merits and do what's best within the regulations.
Thank you. Karen?
So climate change is one of the most critical issues of our time. And the folks that you hire for this job will be very instrumental over the next four years in instituting the Adapt Douglas County Climate Action Plan. That plan needs to be turned into policy. So we will need practical, boots-on-the-ground people to make that happen. My doctorate background is in soils, ecology, and climate and how those interact. So this is kind of right up my alley of things that I like to talk about. Climate change is the issue. Biodiversity and smart planning are two of the major tools we have for that. Biodiversity, supporting that, gives us resilience in a changing climate. And smart planning will save us dollars. It is imperative that we do that. Communities that don't will pay the price, you know, in their, in the dollars for their infrastructure. We do have in Douglas County the most forward-thinking, environmentally-positive solar regs in the country. They take into account biodiversity. They take into account food production. They take into account what, how that land turns back to farming after, after that time. Already, we have the Stoll Solar Facility offsetting costs for Douglas County residents through Free State Electric Co-op. And the Kansas Sky Energy Center is working, if they can, if they can jump through the rest of the needed plans that they have, will offset some of our, our need for coal power. For energy, efficiency is huge. We have a lot of low-hanging fruit we can get to, especially in our rental properties. We need to talk with Kansas Corporation Commission. I'm sorry, that says stop. Thank you. Go ahead.
That's fine. Thank you. All right, Tim?
Yeah, I think we can manage these increasing energy needs and, and climate change through some code opportunities and making sure that we're not consuming excess energy. I think we got to be careful with how we manage those building codes and that types of things because it could create a, could have an adverse effect on the cost of housing and that kind of thing. But I think there's plenty of opportunity to utilize those, those types of methods to create some energy efficiencies within the county.
Testing. Yep, that looks pretty good. I have to question whether we actually need increased energy in Douglas County at the moment. Housing is way down. Thirty-four building permits have been issued in Lawrence so far. Eleven in Yudora for the year. And the newspaper said this morning, maybe 51 in Lawrence by the end of the year. And 28% of greenhouse emissions come from residential heating. The Kansas Corporation Commission Electric Supply and Demand Report says we have a surplus in 2026 and only a 5% decrease, 5% shortfall in 2031. And again, that's for all of Kansas, not just Douglas County. I would suggest we have plenty of power for the immediate future and we need to concentrate efforts on conservation through improved building codes like better insulation and rooftop solar. And while we're at it, maybe we should cover some of the large parking lots in Lawrence with solar panels to take advantage of land not used for anything else. We'll never build our way out of increased power requirements and certainly not if we allow Bitcoin mining and data centers in the county. They're real power hogs. Thanks.
Steve?
Thank you. Kristin apologizes. She got sick. So I'm just glad she didn't get us sick. It's a very complicated issue. It's confusing. We were close to getting rid of that coal plant. Then Panasonic came in and we're going to be stuck with that thing forever. So I am very much one to get rid of that coal plant. If it means more windmills, wind farms, solar, we, we need it. And he's talking about this decade. I'm talking about our children and grandchildren. So we just, we need to do more, but not break the bank on it, basically. Thank you.
Rich?
All right. So my family and I, we moved to a small piece of property in the rural part of Douglas County about seven years ago. And, you know, it's been a learning experience as we have figured out how to care for the environment on that property in lasting ways. We are managing invasive species, soil health, and water management on a very small scale. We're talking about solutions that are sustainable, such as renting goats to clean out our pasture. I never thought this guy who grew up in Miami, Florida would be talking about renting goats. But what this experience has taught me is that the number-one principle in securing environmental health is the personal decisions we each make. That's always the starting point. A large portion of my district is agricultural and it is my plan to spend time talking with those in agriculture to best support them. They are vital to our society and it is important to give them a voice as they care for the large portion of our environment and produce food for us. While I recognize the importance of environmental health, I also feel strongly about limitations on government's role and I believe in strong property rights. As I have gone door to door and spoken to hundreds of Douglas County residents in District 5, not one person has asked me how I plan to steward the environment. In fact, they're asking me to lower their property taxes, to stop the out-of-control spending, and to listen.
We know that our electric grid is aging, so it's something that we do have to address. As we take a look at sustainable options moving forward, we do need to talk to our community and we need to understand the usage at the local level and across the entire county. I do agree with what my colleagues have said, that it's really important that we take a look at all of our policies and our regulations. We do have a lot of work that we can actually do, taking a look at our codes and understanding the opportunities that we have moving forward. But at the same time, we don't want to make it difficult to do business in Douglas County and/or to do business in any of the cities that we have. But we do have an aging electrical infrastructure, so we do have to address that. Solar panels, blighted infrastructures, I've said this before, I said it in the primary, that taking a look at rooftops. We need to take a look at all of those options, especially when it comes to commercial entities that would like to build moving forward across the county. What would it look like for every single entity moving forward to build in some of those codes into their actual plans moving forward so that we are not actually increasing some of the energy, but we're actually giving back some of the energy? From a commercial perspective. From a residential perspective, it doesn't overly benefit the individual to have solar panels. I personally have 42 solar panels on our shop. The net metering policy in Kansas does not pay the resident back.
Hi, y'all. My name's Shannon Reed and I'm your current District 2 County Commissioner. Happy to be here. Thanks to our hosts for, for always making sure there's opportunities for the public to be informed. When tackling climate change and the increase of severe weather that comes with, I think what deserves our attention more than anything is prevention and preparedness overall. Science tells us what changes are happening in real time so we can actually plan accordingly. One example of risk mitigation that I actively support is the county's strict regulation of our floodplain and not allowing further development in those areas of unincorporated Douglas County. I'm also proud, I'm also proud to support our staff's desire to leverage FEMA's buyout program locally to help mitigate risks for private residents as well. In a related way, I'm a champion for the county's adopted goals to further studying the Walker-Roosevelt River Valley's value so that it, so that we can develop on a community-wide basis more explicit strategies for how to protect the critical ecosystem that it is and the natural flood risk management that it gives our community the gift of, not to mention its significant cultural value to indigenous populations locally and beyond. I also have a strong commitment to diversifying energy resources locally. We know that energy use in our homes and businesses are huge contributing factors to greenhouse gas emissions, which both Plan 2040 and our Climate Action Plan directs us to reduce. We can and should be harnessing renewable energy here, solar especially, to help us build capacity for the purpose of more energy transition and our increased regional consumption.
Thanks, Shannon. As the climate changes, chances increase that the northern part of Douglas County will experience another catastrophic flood as it did in 1993. Meeting with residents while going door to door in District 2, many told me that they were very concerned about flooding, especially after the county introduced plans to build a 600-acre solar field just north of the city. Not only will this solar field cover prime farmland, but it will exacerbate the flooding problems that the already maxed-out stormwater drainage system deals with presently. A system that is only 2/3 complete, according to a study done in 2005. I intend to push for the county and city to complete their work and protect the residents and businesses of North Lawrence and District 2. Furthermore, this August, the board voted to amend the text in land use regulations to allow for the installation of huge data centers, battery banks, and cryptocurrency mining operations, again targeting District 2. These types of facilities are huge energy consumers needing electricity in amounts equal to 10% of what the city uses now. Not to mention the enormous amount of water needed for cooling and the noise that would be generated by hundreds of fans. We cannot simultaneously call for us to do our part to fight climate change only to negate our individual efforts by inviting these energy-hungry facilities to reside here. I intend to halt any changes being made to the land use regulations in order to protect the environment and the residents and businesses and food supply of Douglas County.
Thank you, everyone. We'll move on now to the second question. And this time, we will begin with Tim Bruce. The question is, how will your values shape how you make decisions related to taxation and the county budget?
So my values around taxation is making sure that we're doing it responsibly. And what I mean by that is, my, my personal taxes on my single-family home that I live in have almost doubled in the 15 years I've lived in that house. That, while hasn't put a huge strain on my family, I can only imagine that it does put a lot of strain on other families. It's important to me that we not tax our residents out of their homes. I want to make sure that we find a way to keep them, you know, an elderly couple that has lived in their home for 30 years, their house has been paid for, and now they're on the verge of having to move somewhere else because they can't afford the taxes. It's just, I, I can't even get my head wrapped around that. I'm not okay with that. I would really like to make sure that, you know, I mean, the, from a property value standpoint, you know, we, we all appreciate when our property values go up, right? That, that's better for us. On the flip side of that, we can't continue to just let the taxes go with them. We've got to adjust the mills to manage that and the county's got to stay responsible with how they spend that money. Thank you.
Tim's going to think I looked at his sheet and copied what he said. But I have, I do also have compassion for our aging population that's trying to stay in their house. They're on fixed income, sometimes only Social Security and a massive tax increase. And I'll just give you my example. In the last five years, my taxes have gone from $2,200 to $3,200 and that counts the city, the school district, and the county. So it's just not all the county. But I can afford to pay that extra money. Many are not in that same position. So just because valuations go up, we can't think that we can increase taxes and spend all the money from the valuation increase. Ultimately, I will make decisions based on the needs and the consensus of my district. It's a diverse district that includes eastern parts of Lawrence where life expectancy is five years less at birth than in western Lawrence. And it also includes the city of Lawrence and Yudora Township. If elected, I will represent them and not myself. Thanks.
Basically during COVID, the county went on a spending spree like we've never seen. The whole, COVID was basically, the COVID spending was basically the greatest wealth transfer from the rich to the poor in our history. We, we can't seem to unring the bell. Housing goes, goes up. Inflation will continue to go up. And this county commission does not care. So with me, I will have a revenue budget and that will be just beginning. We have, we hired too many positions. We spent too recklessly. We taxed like drunken sailors and it has to stop.
You know, number one, I, I think, again, we have to get back to working for the people. My job is to serve the people of Douglas County and I believe that that should be the guiding principle of any elected official. You know, second, I would say as a commissioner, I need to do everything I can to increase your individual freedom and restrain government. I want, I go on government to get out of your way so that you can flourish and bring creative solutions to Douglas County. The last thing government should be, should do is get in the way, stifle creativity, and discourage human flourishing. Government should be small and unintrusive in our lives. I will do everything in my power to resist the urge of government and its agencies to overregulate, overtax, overspend, overpromise, and overcommit. I believe citizens should be the ones solving problems and creating thriving communities. I'm a big believer in people. And so I plan, I plan to lean on that great resource, people.
As a commissioner, my values would be rooted in integrity, morals, empathy, with really a focus in relationship building. Building trust with the constituents, but also building trust across all of Douglas County. But this work requires working with our current commissioners, the commissioners that get elected, and working with all of the stakeholders across Douglas County. With everyone that submits a budget. Building meaningful relationships and meaningful collaboration across the entire county to understand all the needs of every single entity, every individual, every taxpayer, every resident. Everyone that needs something from the county. It requires relationship building. It requires empathy. It requires compliance. It requires a desire to sit down at the table with them and to understand and to listen and learn and to have emotional intelligence. But it also requires a desire to blend and braid the funding that we do see at the local level so that we can understand if we can lower our budget. If we blend and braid the funding that everyone is receiving and we integrate what they currently have and understand their objectives, maybe we can lower some of the areas of the budget and provide some relief. But we first have to listen and learn and understand what our opportunities are together, not in silos.
How we invest our resources should reflect the values that we think are most responsive to the needs of the county at large. So my starting place as a commissioner is always to look at our budgets through the lens of the values that I hold central, which ultimately have been shaped by my community. Two core values that shape how I approach budgets each year are commitment to both safety and change alike. To boil it down simply, safety is paramount and change is a constant. County government is about facilitating as much safety as possible for folks fundamentally. When I go through department budgets and community partner requests alike, I work to ensure that we are invested in as much safety as possible for as many people as possible. Be it prioritizing that our capital improvement plan has the capacity to meet the needs of road safety improvements, bridge repairs, and necessary building infrastructure over time, or be it ensuring that community resources that are critical can facilitate more safety for residents in forms, in the form of housing security, senior services, and more. It's also about future planning. Change truly is a constant and I believe most of it is positive and a sign of progress, which is why I value it so much. When looking at the totality of our budget, I think about it in two ways. First, whether we have information to tell us that we should commit to changes in our investments that are needed in an area of responsibility we have to the public, such as updating judicial and public safety functions into the future. And I'm also looking for unanticipated changes that require us to adapt allocations, such as the county commission expansion, for an example, or the global pandemic that changed everything.
I would like to bring a new level of transparency and honesty to every decision the board makes, especially when it comes to taxation and the budget. Year after year, the county overtaxes us by tens of millions of dollars, underspends and uses the remaining tax dollars to add to its slush fund, to eventually spend it without public input. The board is claiming now that it only keeps a small amount of reserve funds, but in reality, the cash reserves are in excess of $160 million. In an effort to hide this large sum from constituents, it is broken into many smaller amounts and tucked away across all of the funds labeled as miscellaneous expenditures. But if you look at the actuals on these accounts, there's no money going out and they just continue to grow and grow. Why is the county sandbagging our money, sitting fractured in these accounts, hidden from view, mismanaged and underperforming? Why not be honest about holding our money? Or better yet, return our money and end these budget practices so that we can manage our own wealth so people who live check to check don't have to choose between food, medication, and paying their property taxes? I see this as the biggest issue facing the county today and I look forward to working with the other four commissioners to rectify this broken system and bring back transparency and honesty to the budget-making process and subsequently lowering our taxes.
Back to you, Pam.
So my values for this campaign have centered mostly around the things on my card: people, transparency, listening, and then, as far as this goes, a commitment to living within our means. I love that Douglas County is full of open-hearted and generous people, that, that there's a value that we share where we really care about people. I think what we need to remind ourselves is that value can look different than simply taking money from people through taxes and administering our care through county programs. When you leave administering, or when you leave people with money in their pockets, then they can be generous. They can shop locally. They can feel like they're investing in their community. They can choose to sacrifice to help others. They can oftentimes take care of themselves without so much help. And I think that that's a valuable thing to have as part of our community. If we care about all people, we need to evaluate our budget much more critically and use it, and use more restraint. It has to be addressed with more than a gentle mill levy decrease, even one that's been touted as historic. Our county budgets grew 233% in seven years, from $94 million to $194. And this year, it's 211. And why is that? To quote Ted Lasso, "I'm trying not to be judgmental." Just curious about that. So it would be great to just peruse through it, but it's a 700-page document that makes that a little prohibitive. So the property tax burden, the spending, the appraisals are taxing people out of their homes and denying other people the ability to own a home. And we have to look at that.
I do read that budget, all of it. And we have lowered our, our mill levy. The two years that I've been here, I've been here for two budget cycles. Both of those decreases have been historic. Two mills for this year's property taxes and three mills for next year's property taxes. It is, is very close to revenue neutral. We didn't quite get there. Will be within a couple of dollars of what you paid last year as compared to our other big jurisdictions, city and school district, where they will be $100 or $200 more than what you paid last year. So we've worked very hard to make that happen. In two years, we've turned back a total of 10% of our total property taxing authority. It is a responsible thing to do in light of these increases, It is a responsible thing to do in light of these increases, steep increases in property valuations. Other entities captured that, we did not, we turned it back. One of the values that I bring financially is about, around braided funding. I'm always asking, how are we leveraging the taxpayer dollars into other dollars that also support these programs? I'll give you an example. Douglas County invests in nonprofits. I visited Cottonwood, Inc. just this week. Douglas County annually provides $686,000 to Cottonwood, Inc. They provide supportive housing and supportive employment for individuals with disabilities. They leverage that into $8 million in Medicaid into our community and $6 million in manufacturing contracts that brings that, those dollars into our community. Braided funding is an important piece so that we're not, not putting all of that burden on homeowners.
Thank you. We'll move on to our third question. Normally, it would be Kirsten Kuhn who would start, although, as Steve said, unfortunately, she's ill today and couldn't be here and sends her regrets. So we'll start with Rich.
All right.
What county services contribute to public safety and how would you support these services as a county commissioner?
Well, I think, I, I believe the role of local government is to provide some basic services to the community. You know, we must support our fire department, our emergency medical services, the sheriff's department, our legal and judicial system, and infrastructure, like roads and sewers. The county must also run elections, record public documents, issue licenses, and collect taxes and assessments. The county can and should provide some specific services to assist Douglas County residents going through a mental health crisis or addiction, but these services cannot be unending and service providers must be held accountable. Everything else in the budget needs to be reviewed. Again, local government must restrain itself from over-involving itself in citizens' lives.
Counties play a critical role in ensuring that our infrastructure is set up for success. Ensuring that we have a framework that actually meets the needs of everyone in our county. Ensuring that we have a system that is equitable. Ensuring that we have a system that provides public safety. Ensuring that we have a system that has clean water. Ensuring that we have a system where people can age in place, where people have opportunities for mobility, where people have opportunities for wellness, for health, for safety. We also must ensure that we have funding, funding for our law enforcement, funding for public safety, but also funding for parks. Funding so that people can go out and they can enjoy the green spaces that we have in Douglas County. We have so many green spaces, we must protect those green spaces because mobility is so important. Mobility is important from the moment we are born, from the moment we begin to walk. Mobility is important. It's important as we age. It's important to ensure that we're not increasing comorbidities and increasing our healthcare costs. As we look at lowering costs across the entire continuum for Douglas County, we must not only just think about property taxes, but we must think about all of the costs that add up to all of the costs that we all bear, including healthcare, including infrastructure costs. And we must partner with everyone to ensure that we are addressing them, understanding what we're funding as we're moving forward.
Nearly all county services contribute to public safety, if you ask me. As I mentioned in my last answer, I believe the safety, that safety for the public is at the core of nearly all county functions. There are the more obvious examples, such as our emergency communications center, which is 911 and dispatch, our sheriff's department and court systems at large, or the fact that counties are responsible for all emergency medical services and some fire services here, too. Public safety also looks like critical preparedness and disaster relief that is facilitated by our emergency management department. It looks like zoning and codes enforcement, which helps protect the life and safety of residents through building codes and land use regulations. Public safety is supported by ongoing investments into local crisis response systems, like opening the treatment and recovery center and establishing other harm reduction services to help folks achieve safety. County services contribute to public safety by investing in permanent supportive housing so people have foundational safety first. It is baked into the functionality of almost every bit of county work, which means those services are high priority for me. I firmly believe we have a duty to both sustain and grow the different types of infrastructure, including human infrastructure, that we need in our community for the purpose of public safety. As your re-elected commissioner, I will continue to support the necessary services by making critical investments along the way. I will be an advocate for maintaining our high safety standards across services, along with enhancing them as necessary. I will work to promote the importance of safe staffing numbers and first responder roles especially, and I will respect the investments that all of that requires.
Going door-to-door, speaking with residents, it is clear that the first thing they want their tax dollars to provide for them is the safety that comes from a robust fire department, emergency medical services, sheriff's department, police department, along with the infrastructure that allows for fast response times, well-trained professionals, low crime, and safe streets. People also want safety nets for the most vulnerable of our citizens, the safety of shelter, food, and access to healthcare, job opportunities, transportation, and the dignity of work and a chance to improve their lives. All of these core services deserve to be well-funded and as well, the taxpayers deserve to be able to gauge the successes and failures of each of these services so that we may enhance the ones that are working well and fix the ones that are not. As a county, our resources are finite and we have a duty to provide this safety only while spending in a way that produces the best results at a cost that doesn't put others in jeopardy.
So a lot has come under, under the umbrella of safety, I think, in recent years. But when I read this question, I, I thought simply about, more about the, what the core, what we think about when we think of core government services. So infrastructure, fire and medical, the sheriff's department, the district attorney, the courts. And my thought would be that we would fully fund every and all core government services and build the budget beginning every year with what we need to keep taxpayers safe and having access to the best emergency services. And keep them safe while they're using the things that we have built, like public parks and public spaces. That, that's what I really hear from the people that I talk to.
So I've been a volunteer firefighter, first responder in the rural area for 12 years, including a 3:00 AM house fire at my neighbors this morning. So I interact with public safety and all of these programs intimately, not only as a commissioner, as a citizen, and also as a first responder. The sheriff's office, of course, is the largest piece of our budget. We pay about a third of the Lawrence Douglas County Fire Medical. All of the medical costs fall under us. We own the ambulances in Douglas County and provide that service countywide. I would add that our crisis services, our crisis system, which is our mental health crisis service, would be through 988 Suicide Hotline, the, the Treatment and Recovery Center, Burt Nash. Those are also public safety, as well as our justice programs like Recovery from Addiction through DECA, Artis Helping the Homeless, our, our new Cardinal Living Situation for, for women who are suffering from addiction. That's to keep people themselves safe as well as others safe. Those all fall under this public safety in, in my regard. We do fund programs like Mobile Integrated Health, which is through Lawrence Douglas County Fire Medical. It's to, to save us money on, on frequent calls to the same address, to be able to come in and actually help people solve those issues instead of, instead of repeatedly calling for emergency services. This is a cost savings as well as a human savings. There are a lot of places where we can go into that cost-benefit analysis and that's part of how we evaluate programs for our quality control.
What services contribute to public safety? I think the county as a whole is public safety, whether it's fire and medical, the sheriff's department. It's all public works and the road safety. It's all part of what makes it safe to live here in Douglas County and it's all important. I think we just need to continue to understand where those expenses lie and, and use them and leverage them to be extensive and supportive to our citizens. And, yeah, I'm just, I think public safety is such a broad topic. I mean, you've, you've heard from everybody up here pretty much list the entire county's responsibilities. I mean, that is what we're here to do. So to focus in on any one place, I think would, would give another subject, maybe not the attention that it needs. So, thank you.
Everyone else did a pretty good job uplifting off the departments and functions of public safety at the county level. So I'll just add a few comments. I did go to the Douglas County Sheriff's Citizens Academy this year to learn what they did and they're about 10% of the total budget. Last week, I talked to the firefighters' union to get an idea of what their issues are. They're about 5% of the budget. We pay for EMS, 5% of the budget. All of the employees for EMS and firefighters are on the city payroll, but the county reimburses the city for the EMS folks. I also met with the public works director to get an idea of what their department did. And for those of you who live in the city and don't venture out in the county too much, if you're on a gravel road, you're on a township road, if you're on a paved road, you're on a county road. So that's kind of how you can tell the difference on that. We support all these groups by giving them the resources that they need that are reasonable and within reason. Thanks.
I guess I'll change it up a little bit. Everybody here has great ideas on how to make us more safer and it's all going to cost more. And then we all want to cut the budget at the same time. I don't see a lot of ideas on how to cut things. Can we cut the budget without cutting services? That's a tough sell. So, but that's kind of what I've seen at these forums. Everybody wants budget cut, but not on this, or this, or this. Someone's going to have to make tough decisions. That's why I'm happy to be a libertarian. We are not afraid to make the tough financial decisions that will piss off people. I don't know if the others here can handle the backlash. We've seen what, I mean, county commissioner, city commission, 200 people show up because you're closing down a campground. That's the time, type of atmosphere we have here. I love the passion, but we make things sound easy when it's not going to be.
Thanks, everyone. We're going to switch up the order now in which candidates are responding to questions. And for question four, we're going to start at this end with Brad. What actions would you take in response to A Place for Everyone, the County-City Housing Plan?
The city and county have implemented their plans and policies, so it's important that we are getting transparent and accurate data so citizens can see for themselves the successes and failures of said policies in real time and to be able to continuously monitor the efforts that they have paid for. I've been speaking with professionals and volunteers who are intimate with these situations and processes surrounding individuals and families experiencing homelessness. And a concern that has been relayed to me is that we are losing people in between agencies. When someone needs to be transferred to another agency, they are being given contact information before leaving, but many do not follow through and do not show back up. A solution has been proposed to create a hub that houses all of the community partners that provide services for the unhoused, such as workforce preparation, mental health, medical, and substance abuse treatment and more. Perhaps the county could help facilitate the creation of this hub, maybe even providing its location. I would support the county getting more involved as long as that support is tied to agreed-upon results. I know that the people of North and East Lawrence, Pickney, and Old West Lawrence would also support these efforts if they were experiencing real and direct relief in their own neighborhoods.
The first action I took was enthusiastically voting to adopt our community-wide strategic plan earlier this year. And a core reason that I am running for reelection is because I want to continue leading our commission over the next four years to make good on our stated goals. I'm hopeful about what's possible to achieve in our community regarding our plans to end chronic homelessness here by 2028. Please hear me say, that does not mean that no one will ever experience being unhoused in our community beyond then. That is not what meaning, that is not what ending chronic homelessness or reaching functional zero means, and it's not a promise that any local government can make to its community on our own. We truly need federal and state reforms alongside our efforts to make sincere generational progress. But nonetheless, I am proud of our community's efforts so far to do the right thing and to try our best to create a system that makes anyone's experience of houselessness here very brief, rare, and not recurring. My goals lie heavily in helping convene collaborative partnerships which result in strategies that are rooted in varied perspectives. Strategies that are born of bringing all the pieces of the puzzle to the table so that we can see the whole picture together. The county is and should remain focused on its position to lead collective efforts among the service providers that we help fund and looking for how the county can invest directly. And I am committed to growing our role in leading the development of permanent supportive housing units while also helping shore up the capacity for services that help people stay stably housed. Systems Works is where I remain focused because if we build better and more coordinated system responses to the crises that we face, then we transform it.
A Place for Everyone is a very ambitious plan and it requires, as it appears, it will require a lot of funding. And so I'll say it again, we are tasked with really understanding who is doing what across the entire county and who has been funded by who. And so blended and braided strategies, again, doing a complete gap analysis, a landscape analysis across this entire plan and really understanding everything that is happening. And all the dollars that are actually coming in to fund this entire plan because we have to understand every single objective that is being funded and then create a transparent monitoring plan so that we can actually track all of those dollars that are going to every single objective in the plan. It's a great plan to go to zero by 2028, but there's a lot that needs to happen to actually do the work and to convene individuals and to create all the relationships that will be required to meet the actual goals in the plan. And it's going to require a lot of dollars. And if we don't want to increase our budget, then we really need to look at how we can integrate and blend all the dollars that already exist at the local level, if not applying for other grants, so that we're not already increasing the burden that we have on our taxpayers.
You know, the question we're asking here, it's complicated and I, I don't think any of us are going to do it justice in the minute and a half that we have. I will say, though, as I've walked, I've talked, talked, I said this before, I've walked to close to 1,000 homes now in the residents of Baldwin City, South Lawrence, and in the rural areas. And I can tell you that the large majority of these people in the district are not fans of A Place for Everyone, the housing plan. Rather, they believe that we should have compassion for those experiencing homelessness while also balancing that with a level of accountability. There must be accountability for the unhoused population as well as for those serving the unhoused population. The residents of District Five want results for the millions of dollars and resources that have been committed. Recently, I visited with the community shelter and met with the director, James Chisholm. He really has a heart for the unhoused and he and his team are doing a great job of trying to get these, those who are unhoused the help they need so they can get back on their feet and on their own. As a commissioner, I want to support that and I plan on listening to the people I serve to find solutions with them, not for them.
I guess now it should be called A Place for Anyone unless you haven't lived in Lawrence in 60 days. You are discriminating against non-Lawrence people. I have, I drive Uber, I have talked to a lot of people and families from Delaware Lofts, from Union at the Loop, who are from, you know, mostly from Kansas City. They talk about how much their life is better living in Lawrence. There's nothing like this. And I know we, it's expensive and the goals are pretty lofty. But, you know, I, you know, I clean after the homeless, I have direct centers, you see the same people year after year. Some of these people are not capable to have homes, that's unfortunate. And the plans in place are just making more and more government red tape. And as Ronald Reagan once said, the most terrifying words, "I'm from the government and I'm here to help." The more government involved, the worse things are going to get. Personally, the churches do, the churches do a great job with the homeless and I hope that could continue. Thank you.
I'll read two points from the current A Place for Everyone plan. Provide a grant subsidy for new development or rehabilitation of desired unit types. Establish an incentive program for affordable housing development. Remember, these funds are coming from property taxes, or at least they should be. Recently, the county commission approved a $600,000 voucher assistance program for housing that will be charged against the Mental Health Sales Tax Fund. This is a complex issue and I don't have all the answers, but I do know that the Mental Health Sales Tax Fund was passed to provide funds for mental health projects like the TRC and like the Crisis Center for Youth being developed by Burt Nash. This year, Burt Nash asked for $2 million as part of the funding for their Youth Crisis Center and the commission rejected that expenditure but approved $600,000 in housing vouchers for primarily the aged and other folks that don't qualify for mental health. We also need to get private industry involved. GW Weld and Dusty Baker are developing a 36-unit below-market GWL and Dusty Baker are developing a 36-unit below-market rate housing in Udora, and that's not being listed when asked. The county said they don't have a system for that. Thanks.
A Place for Everyone, I think we need to take care of Douglas County residents first, and be mindful of how we are trying to help everyone. These are our local tax dollars that should go to help our local folks, as we continue to invite more folks into the community and try to help them as well. Well, I think that's great, and we should do that once we get a good handle on our local folks. So, um, you know, there's, there's parts of the plan that I think need some attention, but I, I, I support helping those in need, but I think we need to be very mindful about how we go about spending our dollars to do that.
One of the strengths of the plan is how the city and county are working together, and that division of labor is generally that the city is doing emergency housing, so getting people housed, and then that long-term housing stock. The county takes that middle piece of, of keeping people housed, that supportive housing. And it's not always the people that you're thinking of. When we did our study, it was actually the seniors and our elders that were having, that were the largest number of folks who were needing a supportive housing that we did not have yet in our community. One of the programs I really like from the county is the Housing Stabilization Collaborative. That is a direct rent and utility assistance to keep our people housed. It is Douglas County residents, already housed here, being able to stay in their homes with, with, uh, some, some assistance. Those are direct payments to the landlords and the utility companies that are needing, that, that people have gotten behind on. We also support landlord, landlords to, that are housing some of these trickier individuals, just these high-needs individuals, because I think a lot of our landlords are willing to take risks if they feel like they're not in it alone. That's through the Douglas County Housing Authority. It's also our responsibility between the city and the county, as was mentioned at the beginning, to gather good data and get that out to the community. I keep poking, and with technical issues, we are looking at early October to have that data dashboard, that public-facing dashboard of, of information out to the community, so that we can all start looking and telling, telling the same stories about what's working and what's not working. I absolutely agree that we cannot, uh, we cannot help everyone. We will prioritize, and including asking where people are from, the folks that have a connection here to, to Lawrence. There, there has been in the past, sorry. Go ahead.
Okay. Um, I wanna start with this quote. Patrick Collison, founder and CEO of Stripe, said, "If homelessness was just a question of money, this problem would have been solved." And that is true. I attended the listening sessions back in 2022 that were hosted, and heard so many things that conflicted with the reality of what was happening at that time, and with people that I had conversations with, that, uh, you know, from the beginning, I've just had a lot of questions about what's evolved into A Place for Everyone. The taxpayers of the city of Lawrence and Douglas County were not presented upfront with a plan, a cost, and then given the opportunity to vote on that. There was absolutely no opportunity for community buy-in, and I think we're still paying for that. Besides property taxes, I think this is the most brought-up issue that I talk to people about across our community. So, the communication from the county and the city has been inadequate, and consequently, I think taxpayers are confused, they're frustrated, and that should be acknowledged. It should also be acknowledged that enormous amounts of taxpayer dollars have been wasted. So, I would look at every part of that plan and what we're trying to do, and evaluate the data, if we have any, and involve the citizens of Douglas County. And it has to be based and evaluated on what we can actually afford. If we, you know, won't grow, and we can't have more, you know, business here, and the tax base cannot grow, then how much can we do? And I'm gonna end with this. Michael Schellenberger, "The people who have been the most influential individuals in shaping homeless policy are also the least accountable. As the problem has worsened, their cultural and political power have grown, while voters understandably blame their local elected leaders for the crisis."
Thanks, everyone. And now for our last question. So, the rough order will be the same as for question one, but candidates will speak in reverse order. So, this time, we'll start with Erica and go down the line that way. Are there any other issues you would like to address today? You have one minute each.
So, as we think about the partnerships and the relationship building that's required as a commissioner, I think it's super important to emphasize emotional intelligence and collaboration. This role requires collaboration. It requires sitting down with stakeholders and truly understanding their needs. It requires going door-to-door. It requires talking to residents and bringing them together and understanding their needs. It requires an individual that can gain consensus. It requires an individual that can also support others when consensus is not actually achieved, because we're not always going to achieve consensus. And when we don't achieve consensus, we must still come together as a community and rally together, instead of continuing to create silos and chaos. We must find some form of peace together as a community and come together, no matter what happens after this election.
Look, um, as, again, as I've gone door-to-door in all parts of District Five, I have talked to friends that live in every other commissioned district, sitting up here. Stopping the oppressive increases in property taxes in a substantial way is what people are interested in and clamoring for. They are also interested in ending the out-of-control spending, and lastly, they are desperate for their representatives to listen and serve them. We work for the people of Douglas County. If we don't do these things, we will have an even angrier electorate in 2026. While we have gone in the wrong direction for quite some time, I am encouraged. As I meet the people of Douglas County, I'm impressed. They are full of creative ideas on how to improve our county. They have so much knowledge and wisdom, and they really are passionate about living here and making it the best place to be. I wanna tap into that. As, as a county commissioner, I wanna work alongside you, because this is the community we will share.
Governor Kelly's probably biggest accomplishment has been the elimination of the food sales tax by the end of the year, at the end of the year. Douglas County residents, or Lawrence and Douglas County, will be paying 2.6% still. My first day on the county commission, I will call for a vote to eliminate the county portion of the food sales tax, is the most regressive tax there is. But everyone else is right. The taxation in general is just out of control, and that's why we have elections, to stop this. Thank you.
In the interest of transparency, I'll bring up a minor issue, but, um, state law requires all elected officials in the county's salaries be approved by the county commission. You won't find that on the agenda anywhere. It's buried in the line item budget. In 2021, county commissioners made $39,543 annually. In 2025, commissioners will make $49,706 annually. That's a 7% average increase each year for the last four years. That's because it's written into their personnel policies that county commissioners get the average annual increase for all county employees. I think that needs to change. Thank you.
As a county commissioner, I wanna, as the county, we are here to be the county, and to help facilitate all of our communities, and not get stuck in single parts of the county. To me, it's important that we help facilitate and keep everyone in the county as safe as we can, as productive as we can, help with economic development across the board, and help grow our tax base. So, I just like the idea of being at the county and making sure that we stay at the county. And anybody within other jurisdictions that needs our help, we're absolutely there to help, but it's not necessarily ours to, um, do for them. So, thank you.
Say, it's important that we be diversifying our economy and growing our economy, uh, sorry, and our, our tax base. And that means saying yes to housing in towns, and it means saying yes to commercial and industrial for employment centers here, so that, as we, we're proud of the crisis care systems and the justice programs that we have, but in order to keep them, we need to be able to pay for them without overrelying on residential taxes. So, saying yes to some of those, uh, commercial and industrial uses will be an important thing for our, our community to, to rely on. We need people who can speak across silos to get some of that done, so I'd be glad for your vote for District Three. Thank you.
So, the county commission, local government, is the place to listen to and respond to citizens, and to administrate the business of the county with excellence, and to make life affordable and safe for the people that live here. Those are the priorities. We have so many ideas and plans for the future that we're ignoring the pain on the ground today sometimes, I think. Always this promise of future problems being solved, while we're simultaneously seem to be undermining what's been built and worked well for a long time. So, I'm committed to building a, and, uh, yeah, I'm committed to building a local government where everyday citizens have access to helping shape the decisions that affect their daily lives. And right now, that is clearly property taxes. So, I'm committed to also helping this county move forward and grow.
I think the rest of the panel had some really good things to say. Again, I wanted to bring up transparency and due process. I think everyone would like to repair the relationship between the county staff, the board, and the constituents they represent. If the cost of repairing this relationship is slower government because of the longer public comment time, more restrictions on what can be passed as consent agenda items, and coming before the people for every large purchase, then so be it. I'm willing to make these changes to bring the control back to the people and restore the trust that we need to move forward together.
I just wanna take this opportunity to expand a little bit on affordable housing issues, and acknowledge that, of course, they are about far more than just addressing the crisis of people being unhoused in our community and across our entire country. It's about a lot of things, including the growing concerns of some homeowners, that they cannot afford to keep their properties because of the inflated expenses of nearly everything in our country, and on a local level, including taxes, because of the historic jumps in property valuations. I do remain committed to helping lead the county in lowering our mill levy when possible, like I have for the past three years, while still maintaining services for our community's overall safety and not sacrificing that. My strength as a leader is that I am open to all options before me, and to the new and nuanced perspectives of others that I don't yet know. I work to be responsive to folks when they wish to share concerns or ideas, and I meet them where they're at. I believe in hearing people out and trying to understand their perspectives better, even if we ultimately may disagree. I'm a leader who's been working, who's been working to build better communities all my life, and I make people-centered decisions on behalf of my constituents, which are all Douglas Countyans, even if it's only District Two voters who can cast a ballot for me.
Thank you, candidates, for helping citizens be better prepared to vote. And thank you to our community partners, the NAACP for cosponsoring, and to the library for hosting this forum. On behalf of the League of Women Voters of Lawrence-Douglas County, please vote in all the elections, local, state, and national, on November 5th. Early in-person voting begins on October 16th. Please join us, too, for our next Civic Engagement 101 event about renewable energy in Lawrence and Douglas County at 6:00 PM here at the library on September 26th. And now, we encourage everyone to stay and visit individually with the candidates, and thank you to the audience for attending tonight.